We're live. It's not even time yet.
Yes, it is.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of June 20th, 2017. I'll need temporarily for a clerk. Someone make a motion for that?
Yeah, I move Judy be appointed clerk.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
We also, do we have to make you acting?
No.
No, automatically happens.
It automat-- yeah, that's an automatic.
All right, okay. It's okay with me.
You want a roll call?
Yes.
Present this evening are Mr. Tropiano, Mr. Scasiati, Mrs. Whiteside, Mr. Slavin, Mr. Bowen, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Titlebaum will be arriving, but he's not here yet.
Okay. Tootsie, how would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I...
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Announcements, Patrick?
No, I'll wait for later on.
Okay. Tony?
I'll sit, thank you.
This is Whiteside.
Yes, I have one. The FinCom has an opening and Capitol Planning also has an opening. We are making a bunch of appointments tonight, but they-- we still are looking for volunteers for those two committees. And that's it. Thank you.
All I have tonight is just redo the Wareham Historical Society. We'll have their Antiques Fair on July 4th at Center Park. There'll also be a cash show at the Tremont Nail Factory again on the 4th, which is Tuesday. It starts at approximately 8:00 in the morning and goes to 2:00 in the afternoon. Nothing else? Any citizens or any comments or anything? What do you know? Appointments, reappointments, interviews.
I have an application from Luther D. Howard III to be appointed as a member of the Bike Path Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020, and that is my motion.
Second.
Is Luther here? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0. Next?
Next, we have the Board of Health. A reappointment of Dr. Amy Vigant to a term to expire June 30th, 2020, and I-- that is my motion.
Second. Bye.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Tony. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
No. Did-- yeah.
Opposed.
He's opposed.
Oh, you're opposed?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Patrick. Apologize. Old man? No, here.
CETA appointment. I move that Michael Fitzgerald of 12 Widow's Cove Lane wear him be appointed-- reappointed as a member of the Community and Economic Development Authority, otherwise known as CETA, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021. That's my move.
Are we still appointing to CETA?
Yes, because the act hasn't gone through.
I thought it would fall to the Board of Selectmen until...
I'd hold off on this.
I withdraw my motion.
Because I think Mr. Fitzgerald also was about to move to Rochester.
And I have no objection to Mr. Fitzgerald, it was just sort of a...
I thought we were reorganizing that.
Yeah, so...
I have two applications, reappointments for the Community Events Committee. I move that Laurie C. Benson of 295 Onset Avenue Onset be reappointed as a member to the Community Events Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mrs. Scasiati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
Secondly, I make a motion that Linda Gueye of 8 Short Neck Road, Onset Mass be appointed as a member-- reappointed to the Community Events Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mrs. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
Community Preservation Committee. I move that Barbara Smith of 6 Prospect Avenue Onset be appointed to the Community Preservation Committee from the Historical Commission representative to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0. We need to double-check that date also at the office, because usually when it's a committee that's usually done yearly rather than three years. Just double-- we'll double-check and make sure.
You're right. Actually, I-- may I change my motion? You're right. It's a one-year appointment. I withdraw my motion.
Okay. We'll start again.
Okay. I move that Barbara Smith of 6 Prospect Avenue Onset Mass be appointed to the Community Preservation Committee as the Historical Commission representative to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2008. We're in '17, right? So we're '18. 2018.
I said second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
I now have in front of me several recommendations for the Conservation Commission. I move that Robert P. Lassen of 2 Matapoyset Road wear him be reappointed to the Conservation Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All-- excuse me, second by Mr. Scasiati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
I move that Kenneth J. Baptiste of 2321 Cranberry Highway West wear him be appointed as a member-- reappointed to the Conservation Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Scasiati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
Joseph-- I move that Joseph Leggett of 1 West Boulevard wear him mass, be reappointed to the Conservation Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Scasiati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
I move that Mark Carboni of 4 Marsh Avenue wear him mass, be appointed as an associate member to the Conservation Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Selectman Tropiano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
I move that Donald J. Rogers of 2714 Cranberry Highway wear him be appointed as an associate member to the Conservation Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye. Let the record show that Mr. Titlebaum is...
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
Here. Want me to keep going?
Sure. What do you got? Appointments?
Yep.
Yeah, why don't you guys get through that?
I have a council on aging. I move that Nancy Sawyer of Post Office Box 344, Onset Mass be appointed as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
Give Peter the water.
What?
Do you want that water?
Oh, thanks.
I move that Peter Dunlop of 2 Broad Marsh Avenue wear him mass, be appointed as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Scasiati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
I move that Rosa Lee Bulu of 1813th Street wear him be appointed as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
I move that Judith Peterson of 92 Hathaway Street wear him be appointed as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Are we having fun?
Open Space Committee. We have two reappointments. Move that Trenton Blanchard of 2013th Avenue wear him mass, be appointed as a member of the Open Space Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mrs. Scasiati. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
I move that Donald Hall of 4 Circuit Avenue wear him mass, be appointed as a member of the Open Space Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020. I'd like to mention that Mr. Hall has been in continuous service to this town in a volunteer capacity for more than 35 years running.
Yes, he has. Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals. I move that James Yakabachi of 3989 Main Street wear him be appointed as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
Okay.
Nope, not done.
Not done.
One more. Oh. We-- we were going to do this, but we think maybe we don't need to.
Cedar, I thought we were...
Yeah, we're holding off on those, I think, so...
Thank you.
I believe Mike's moving.
See where the legislation stands?
Okay.
As far as I know, it's ready to go.
So you need to sign...
I have to sign all these here.
This is a whole...
Okay.
I'll sign them later. Yep, so we're all through with 1 through 6?
Yes, sir.
Wow, you guys are fast. No licenses and permits?
We did that. While I read it as a... Do you have the open space one there?
This is zoning.
It's right there, right? Trenton Blanchard...
And Donald Hall.
Donald Hall and is it Linda Scharf? Oh, Scharf? Okay.
Did you have her in there?
Yep, we do. Thank you.
I thought I saw her in the emailed version.
No, actually... Yeah.
Hey.
Hey.
Ah.
I'm not perfect.
It was hiding.
Wow.
You went 19 for 20, that's not bad.
Okay. I move that Linda Scharf of 153rd Street, Onset Mass, be appointed as a member of the Open Space Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020. Are you here, Scharf?
Come on up, please.
Second.
Just introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in serving on this particular commission.
Okay. I'm Linda Scharf, and I moved here with my husband about a year and a half ago. See lots of things that look like interesting projects around Wareham, and I like what Sandy and her committee are doing with open space, so that's one place that I would like to serve.
Great. Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate your interest.
Motion by Mrs. Whiteside, second by Mr. Tropiano. Any questions in the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Pick up your paperwork tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Done.
Done?
Done.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, no licenses and permits. Just by way of explanation, I'm late coming out of New Hampshire from Canterbury Lake Park. I usually show up with a shirt tie and a blazer, but this is what you get tonight, folks. A, discussion with Director of Planning and Community Development, re-master plan. Why don't you come on up, Mr. Buckland? Good evening.
Good evening. And here to talk about the master plan, among the many things that we do in the town. A master plan is a structured representation of the goals, the vision, the aspirations of a community. And you master plan because you wanted to find what hills you want to climb. Or as my mother asked me when I was 45, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Well, she waited to the stage to ask a male child...
And this was it. She must be so sorely disappointed.
Turning over in a grave. So town meeting appropriated $50,000 for use on both the master plan and we're using it for the open space and recreation plan update, which is an element of the master plan. A master plan by state law has nine elements in it. First is the goals and policies. It's a vision for the future. Then there are future land use and development patterns, housing, which is both the needs for affordable housing, workforce housing, and what to do about existing neighborhoods and the protection of those. Economic development, which is jobs, taxes, and programs, an inventory of natural and cultural and historic resources, open space and recreational facilities, as I said, and the anticipated needs for public infrastructure and services, proposed transportation infrastructure, and finally a path to action with actors and schedule and/or priorities for making the master plan a reality, the implementation plan. But I like to have the towns decide what they want in their master plan. And I think of this as what I call a path of discovery. As we go through the process and allow some development of ideas, we'll see where we want to come out in terms of a master plan and the direction of that plan. So what kind of process do we have now? Well, we've contracted with SERPED, the Regional Plan Agency, for assistance. We're reviewing current and past planning efforts. The examples are the past master plan, which was done back in 1998. Nice full document. The summary of all the goals and objectives from this came out with 20 pages of actions. Some of them have-- many of them have been done, some of them have not, some of them have been ignored, and we still have more to do. There is also the Housing Production Plan, the Slum and Blight Study, the CPA Plan, and the zoning study that are all these different actions that take place in the town as it -- as the committees do their work and advance the planning efforts. We have three public workshops that we'll be-- we'll be scheduling for-- we had the initial public workshop that we had on Saturday a couple weeks ago, which had a fairly light turnout for our master plan, but still it was a good discussion. We'll be talking with focus groups, board and commission meetings. There are 35 boards and commissions in the town. There are numerous community groups, and I'll offer to visit every one of these groups and boards and commissions if they want to have input to the master plan and the processes we proceed. There is online surveys, questions, and comments. There is a Facebook page, which is identified as the Wareham Master Plan. And the products we will have are the goals, objections-- there may be objections-- objectives, the vision, the future land use map, and an implementation plan with the actors' actions and priorities for proceeding. What has been done before in terms of planning has been that the Board of Selectmen came up with their own statement of goals. And you may be familiar with this statement of goals. It's something that went through the process of planning and expectations of the Board of Selectmen at the time and developed into a document that guides the board in their -- and the town actions that they proceed with in the-- in all the decisions that you make. I had sent this around to the board members. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It has service, finance, natural resources, housing, historic preservation, open space, economic and technology, all as elements of the goals that the Board of Selectmen want for the town. The questions for you tonight are, are these still applicable to what you're trying to accomplish? Are there any updates that are necessary? And if-- when you have that chance to read through them and analyze these, you can provide me with the-- your input on these, and we'll go back and have another little process of drafting up the goals, the statement of goals.
It's Patrick.
I got this, you know, and I read it. And when I got it earlier today, and I find it just as relevant as it was when it was originally written. I find it to be very-- very on point, in fact, if you read it. And almost to the point where, you know, we had talked once upon a time about maybe updating our mission statement.
88-10.
And maybe this would be a good point to sort of lead us in that direction for updating the mission statement as well. I think it's very relevant today. Every single point is good, and I don't see, you know, much more than this to be leading a town. I think it's a terrific job.
I agree. It was very well done at the time. I just want to confirm with the board that this is still what you like to do.
As far as I'm concerned, I think you're on the track. On the tracks and speeding down. They have to rest what they think.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with it.
Stuck on Whiteside?
I emailed you earlier today and said, you know, how many...
Give you some time, don't we?
Yeah, give me some time, please. So...
Sit out this afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah, not this afternoon. So while I agree with my peers here, I think that I would like time to think a little harder. I had exhaustion brain earlier.
Paint fake.
Paint fake.
Quick slide.
We have a policy, I believe it's 88-10. We kind of bypassed doing that, because it's about 10 or 12 pages of Selectmen's policies, which is a Selectmen's master plan technically. So we'll work on that and basically merge that into what you've got already. My comment, of course, was, okay, because there's no way to give you an answer in about two hours.
No.
There's a lot of work to do.
Right.
But the master plan going back, that was done, I think it was finished in 98, whatever it was.
1998 is when it was published.
But I think it's actually started like 95. Actually, if you read it, there's a lot of pieces in there that are still relevant today. There's some that aren't, because everything changes, but overall, there's a lot of, you know, good meat in there.
There is, and that's one of the reasons why we're going back over this. We're not necessarily starting from scratch.
We don't need to.
What you're doing is taking these and confirming that these ideas are still good, that they still are relevant to the town and to the people of the community.
I think what I'd like to do is put you back on the agenda sometime in July, so that we can all have time to go through this further. Next week's going to be a busy week. We've got to get the rest of the appointments done, and then the week after we'll be off on July 4th, but maybe one of the first couple of weeks that are available in July, we can come back at this, once we've all had a chance to take a look at it. I know Patrick was around and probably-- his name's probably in there at some point, so he probably was able to do the five-minute speed read and go, "Yeah, yeah, 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 I remember all that stuff." But the rest of us don't have that advantage, so we're slower than you. We're going to need three or four weeks. So that's what I like to do, is come back to this at that point.
And I think there are a couple of things here. One is the goal-- the statement of goals itself and the Board of Selectmen's master plan direction. The other is, what do you want the master plan to accomplish? What should it do as a document? Should it talk about process for making decisions? Should it try to list out a series of actions? Should it provide additional information that you think is necessary to make appropriate decisions in the town? All of that is...
Do all of those.
To what the content of the master plan would be.
The other thing is that it does not need to go sit on a shelf.
Yeah.
Sure hope not.
Got that right.
That's what usually happens.
I don't think my mother would approve of me doing that.
Just about every town in the land, they pick out the pieces that they want, and then they put it on the shelf. It usually goes from board to board, and each board picks out what they want to deal with, and they move on to the next thing. Because, you know, as much as you want to direct the document, there's still going to be a lot of stuff in there that every board, and it is part of the political process, doesn't agree with in the process, because that's how a plan works. If it's a complete plan, it will have a lot of that kind of stuff in it. And it just-- it sits there for a long time. Because I remember when I sat on the board in 2000, us saying, "You know what? We got to pull this thing out, and we got to read it, and pick out some stuff, and see what we're going to do." And we did. We took it, we read it, and we picked out stuff that we wanted to push and push along to try to get something done on it, because it literally was collecting dust since 98. And that was a few years before that, you know? So, yeah, it's one of those documents that has a tendency to want to sit on a shelf.
You know, what it takes is stewardship. It takes people to want to do the implementation, and a lot of towns, and we might think about this, have an implementation committee that follows through on the master plan. And it could be the Board of Selectmen, it could be some other group that you set up that becomes the instigator for completing the plan.
If we set up another committee...
It was my suggestion.
I didn't need to finish the sentence.
The real process for the master plan is to give a cohesive set of goals for where the town wants to go. So any board, whether it's a planning board, conservation, any of these boards, they have a basic goal that the town wants to accomplish. They can work their way toward that. But there is a basic, at the end of the day, at that final point, this is where you want to be at, this is what you want your town to be, this is how you want it to grow, et cetera. So it actually is a basis for every single board committee, from the Selectmen, the Town Administrator, all the way down, because that's the only way it works. Because if it's not, it's not a master plan. It's just a hodgepodge of plans, and everybody goes off in different directions. And when everybody goes off in different directions, you go backwards.
Right. And I love this statement of goals as well as Mr. Tropiano, the idea that it's so simple and direct and complete in terms of what the board was thinking at that time was the direction that the town should take. And that's what I would like to have, in something elegant, as they say, and something that focuses on what's really important and directs the community in multitude ways to accomplish it.
Well, simplicity is easy. Complex things never work.
I don't know, simple and elegant.
Elegant, I'm not, I'm just saying, simplicity itself is how things can get to be done. You get too complicated, you lose people. It doesn't work. It'll be fine. We're going to get it done.
We'll have plenty of time in a few weeks to talk about philosophy.
Yeah, I was just so happy to see this when it came through, though, because it was so poignant and so simple and so direct to the point.
Yep.
It's hard to do--
As it was back then when we wrote it.
Yeah. It's hard to write something in a simplistic, you know, measure. That's the hardest thing to do. Everybody overthinks.
It'll be interesting to look at it and try to score where we are versus where it said we should be.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we got a bad score, trust me.
One of the things I like to think about when you go through this planning process is think about 10 years from now, what you want the news headlines to say about the town of Wareham. Has it accomplished something? And what is that accomplishment?
Well, we went through 10 years where there was absolutely nothing. I mean, it was just completely backwards. And that's the kind of thing that happens when you change leadership. And that's why people have to be careful about how they handle their politics. There's really no place for politics within a town, to run a town.
True enough.
Well, I'd like to repeat that the offer to the boards and commissions that I'll meet with whoever wants to have their input into the master plan. This includes neighborhood groups as well as business associations that would like to have some input into the process. And that'll be outside of the public workshops that are open to the general public, and we'll have those in the coming months as well.
Yep. Those will all be in the same format that the original presentations were with SerpEd and so forth? Are you going to be doing those?
They'll be different. The public workshops coming forward with SerpEd will be organized so that when we come back to the public process, we'll have some concepts of what the goals and objectives are. We'll want confirmation by the public about where the direction the town should be going. And then we'll repeat that as we further develop the plan to let people tell us, are we doing it right?
Yep. Okay, thank you. So almost on the same sort of lines that the Tree Montney presentations have worked, go to, you know, get information out there, go to the public, get feedback, revise, go back to the public, and eventually come up with a set of priorities and a set of goals?
That's right.
Okay.
And the next one, I'm hoping that we can have it as an ice cream social to attract people. I'm not allowed to bring beer to these public workshops, so I think ice cream may be the way we attract people to the process.
The other thing is, in my opinion, the most important piece in this is you, the planner. Because somebody has to be there on a daily basis to help guide the process, and that's where you come in. And, you know, we waited for you to come before this could really take place. And now that you're here, we're ready.
My extension is 6501. You know, give me a call.
Yeah, I think from a Bronx tale, the saying is, now yous can't leave.
This should be a fun process as well. It's interesting for people to go through that. And that's what I hope to make it.
It will be. Well, thanks for your work so far. We look forward to having you back here before us in a little bit to get a little more feedback.
Thank you for your leadership.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, do we have any requests to place signs on town property?
No.
Nothing in the folder.
Nothing? Okay.
May I make a suggestion, sir?
Sure.
I'd like to ask you, if you haven't already done it, to write a letter to all of the realtors in town and all of the people who put signs up and say, you know, thank you very much for living by the rules and, you know, I think the people who are most noticeably not following it are the realtors who have maybe new people working for them. And so I just, a friendly reminder might be helpful.
Are you talking about the open house signs lagging?
Yes.
Well, after the open house has taken place?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, you can put, in front of the property, you can put the sign, but you can't have it, you know, the six miles--
Seventeen arrows.
Seventeen arrows and the balloons and all of the good stuff. But, you know, for the most part, it's been very well observed.
Okay.
The other thing I think we need to add, you know, I'm not, you know, I never was a real proponent of this sign bylaw, so to speak--
We know.
--when it came to the commercial application with the buildings and stuff. But this keeping, you know, making the town look better is always a good thing. And I think we need to have a profile of what some of these signs need to look like. Because in recent times, there's some signs put up that we gave no permission to that are also on state property that have got to be the ugliest signs I ever saw in my life. I mean, they look like they were written in, you know, they're like red, like somebody took a paintbrush and just drew whatever on them like this. And they just look horrendous, absolutely horrendous. And, you know, I don't care whose they are, they look terrible, and we need to have, say, well, this is what a sign looks like. Use it, you know, use the template or whatever. So I think we ought to add that to our work somewhere along the way, and let's see if we can't get that added in there about what these signs should look like.
Well, I know there were some issues we heard from the past Director of Inspection Services. He thought that the restrictions on sandwich board signs at just restaurants was a little too restrictive. He was hoping to do more with that. He also didn't mind the banana signs, you know, that's an aesthetics thing. Some people like them, some people can't stand them. I've heard both views. But those were a couple of things that I think we were hoping to look at anyway, so maybe we can add that to the list and talk about things for the fall town meeting.
Yeah, because I think there's some things that could be revisited and tweaked on this thing. I don't think we did the perfect job on it.
Sure I did.
You know, I know, Alan, you did a great job, but I think--
And I helped him.
Huh?
I helped him.
Everybody who was involved did a great job, but I think it could use a little improved--
After a few years, I think we can see where there might be some areas you'd want to change. Like with any law, this 20 pages long.
Do some improving.
Oh, that was a blow.
That's okay.
It's just an factual description of the length of the law. I don't see what the issue was.
Actually, the way the sign bylaw is written, every sign, whether it's, no matter what it is, is supposed to be signed off by the code enforcement officer, which is Director of Inspeccial Services. We're supposed to have a stamp that shows the sign's been approved. That's in the actual bylaw, which we don't do.
Yeah, I know we don't. We don't have the time for that. We have to have an exclusive sign guy just for that.
The problem is nobody's going to bring you the sign. You know, like, say, the "Don't Trash Wareham" signs, every one of them down for him to stamp.
No, but if you--
That would be crazy.
If you created a template that said, this is what the downtown "Don't Trash Wareham" signs are going to say, and he would sign off on one that would be in the file, and realtor signs--
Yeah.
That's the basic--
I mean, I can create something like that.
Yeah, that's good.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
And there's guidelines for the signs, too, as well, in the bylaw.
Has to be. Because, I mean, you should see--
No, they're on--
--big chunks of wood with, like, paint on them. It looks awful. It looks absolutely awful.
Unfortunately, on the state highway, we're--
Talk about shanty town. My God, it looks awful.
They're on the state highway.
State highway, we're kind of stuck as to what to do about them, though. That's the only thing.
Huh?
On the state highway, we're kind of stuck as to what to do about them, though. That's the only thing.
Well, I mean, it's simple enough for us to make a call, and they'll come get them. The state, don't fool around with that either.
Especially the more hideous ones.
Don't fool around at all. They don't even give permission.
No, there's no permission whatsoever.
No.
You know, and they'll come down, gone, in two seconds.
That might be your easiest course.
Only right at the corner, you know?
Yep, oh, I know.
Right around the corner.
They're not far away. Okay, we can come back to that. Next up on the agenda, 20 Depot Street, local initiative housing proposal. I guess there are some folks here to speak to that tonight.
Come on down. You're the next contestants. One of my favorite shows.
They even have their own easel. They even brought their own easel.
Oh, yeah.
Auntie, how are you?
Hi. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to trade.
That's a gift we'll have to accept.
Thank you.
How are you?
No, I'm not trading easels.
Wow, yeah, she was ignoring you.
She's ignoring all of us. It's okay.
She's very wise.
Yes, exactly. We've learned to do that as well.
Is this the site of the old nursing home?
Maybe.
No?
Yeah, that could be.
Okay. Okay, a few folks would introduce yourselves and get started with your presentation.
A little least closer to you, because some of you may have soft voices.
Yeah, it's a little tough with the air conditioning, too. The background's a little noisier.
And the air conditioning is going nowhere.
How many engineers does it take to do an easel?
Apparently more. Yeah, it's too complicated for you, Derek. Forget it.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Anthony Frangiatis. I'm serving as the architect on this particular proposal. Thank you for hearing us this evening. With me, I'll just do some quick introductions. To my far left is Dean Harrison. Next to Dean is Steve Bushman, the property owner, and to my left is Brian Grady from GAF Engineering. Mr. Bushman has purchased the property located at 20 Depot Street, which is on the corner of Depot Street and Tyler Avenue, directly across the street from the East Wareham School. He is a resident of this particular neighborhood and has constructed one building type similar to what's being proposed this evening, and that's located at 17 Depot Street, which is the photograph in your packet. I also have extra copies if anyone's interested in seeing the information that we have this evening. Yeah. The proposal is to redevelop the existing parcel, which contains an existing single-family dwelling. And we would like to propose it. Part of the reason we're here before you, we met with Mr. Buckland and Mr. Sullivan about a month ago to discuss the concept, is we're looking to propose it as a local initiative program. The proposal is to construct three buildings on the property, each containing two units. All of the units would be affordable, and they would be given preference to veteran housing or military families.
The building that's there now, is it the lawn low one?
It is low.
And it's setback.
And it's one story, and it's setback.
Yeah, thank you.
It sits approximately in the center--
Yep.
--of the proposed lot.
Thank you.
This is a single lot right now?
It is a single lot. It would remain as a single lot. Two families are allowed in this particular zoning district, which is MR 30. This particular, which is how the previous project was constructed, 17 Depot Street, that is an existing two-family that is being rented out through Housing Solutions and the property owner. He's managing that particular property, and the plan would be for him to manage this particular property as well.
Is 17 Depot deemed affordable? Is it classified as affordable?
No.
No.
That was constructed via special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals. There was an existing single-family dwelling or two-family dwelling there that was reconstructed five years ago now. And it's fully occupied. The plan is to take the same building type, which is, in the photograph, you can see it, and we have the architectural drawings as well. It's one unit per floor. So it's one unit on the second floor and one unit on the first floor. The nice thing about that particular design is it allows the first floor to be a handicap-accessible unit if it needs to be.
Yep.
So we have not started any of the process. We've had some initial conversations with DHCD, met with Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Buckland. They suggested we come here. We have not filed anything with DHCD for a local initiative program. We'd like to do that cooperatively, if that's something that the board is interested in pursuing. So Brian's here to address any of the site issues. Dean can speak to the financing side of things in terms of marketing, and Stephen can address any of the-- He is a person from, a representative from Housing Solutions could not be with us tonight, but they handle the VASH vouchers, which are the veteran vouchers.
Okay, just, I have one question regarding financing. Would you be seeking funds from either the town's Affordable Housing Trust or the Community Preservation Committee?
We haven't made-- excuse me, Dean Harrison. We have not made a decision on that yet. We are just exploring the various opportunities. I mean, obviously, that's an opportunity that we could use--
Yep.
--to help offset this, the cost of the financing.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Want to go first? Go ahead.
Yeah. Is there, I'm pretty sure there probably are. Are there programs, federal programs at the moment, that would encourage veteran uses-- using, uses--
I can't talk.
Veterans using these units as preferred--
Yes, there are different funding sources out there, both federal and state. We haven't explored those yet either. Most likely, they would be using the vouchers that are available through Housing Solutions instead of having just what we call grants or loans applying to the project.
Patrick?
Thank you.
All right. All right, so I actually like these kinds of things, when they do these things, because they take, and I know this property now that you, across the street, I look Tyler Ave, I know exactly where it is. And I like this idea. I love the idea of it, to put them into duplexes. I think it helps with affordable housing, it fits into the neighborhood, you know, the way this whole street is designed, it's perfect. I wouldn't be, I'm never in favor of using our trust money or our CPA funds or anything else to fund these, especially since, you know, the lot's really 37,000 square feet and you're getting six units out of it, right? So, I mean, you should be able to make it work. We're in the Boston zone for affordable housing. So if you can't make it work, then you shouldn't be in the business, or you shouldn't be doing this, okay? So you should be able to make it work. So I don't believe in using our CPA funds or anything of that nature. But I like the project. I like the fact that it's using a piece of land. It's actually, it's almost very commercial even, the whole road, as you know, the way it comes down. The school's there, and then there's Depot Auto not too far past it, and it comes up to Cranbury Highway. So it's kind of in a good spot for this kind of thing. And it doesn't really have, it doesn't detriment a neighborhood at all because it's mostly designed this way. So I like it, and I'd be in favor of it. Again, I wouldn't be, if you went to CPA, I'd be there to say no. Okay?
Thank you.
Selectmen Skyzotti?
Is there a driveway someplace?
Yeah, we didn't go through the site access. Do you want to walk through that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the site access comes off of Tyler Ave.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's on the next--
Right in.
Right here, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we didn't want to have the driveway off of Depot. Much more traffic.
There are also some significant trees along Depot Street that we would like to maintain, if possible--
Yeah.
--that are there. So the plan would be to access the site off of Tyler Ave during construction and when it's occupied, so they'd be able to work backwards and maintain the big trees along Depot.
Thanks. Go ahead.
At one point, this depot was actually, had company housing for one of the mills or the, just down the street. So the multifamily approach is not new to this area.
Not at all. You know, it's kind of interesting. This seems to be affordable housing, we can Wareham. Just last week, we talked about, I guess what I would call a mega proposal, 174 units, and the board authorized me to send a letter containing no fewer than 15 concerns with a project of that size. Yesterday, some of us attended the grand opening of the 800-whatever-it-was Main Street, the Father Bill's Mainstream Buzzards Bay Coalition Joint Project that's going to house six homeless people out there. That was another small-scale housing project. This is another small-scale housing project, and I have to concur with Selectmen Tropiano, the idea of having these smaller-scale things just in a neighborhood that are within the scale of the existing neighborhood is really, I think, the direction in which we want to go. is really, I think, the direction in which we want to go. And it's too bad the town planners are still hanging around because he could throw that right into the master plan right now.
Yeah, I almost stopped him.
Yeah. But that's sort of my observation. Alan?
Anthony, is this use going to be conforming? Are you going to have to go before the ZBA for this?
So the use is conforming in that two-family dwellings are allowed. We would have to go to the ZBA for lot area and number of units. Because he could, right now, apply, I believe, within our current zoning construct, build one-two-family dwelling in this particular neighborhood, even though the existing is a single-family. I'm sure there's a permitting process that he could do.
Yep.
To get this number of units, we can't use the existing zoning, which is why we would have to file for a comprehensive permit. And we'd like to do it as a local initiative program. Comprehensive permits are not inexpensive all around. And the town chooses not to support it. It's not inexpensive to do that either. So part of these preliminary discussions is just to find out if everyone is on the same page because there's no sense in spending anybody's dollars if we're not.
The way this is set up, looking at it, you know, even though the amount of actual living area for the square footage, people might look at it, this is almost like a mini cluster. And it's a real good use of the land. The ZBA, if that's where it goes to, we'll discuss, you know, how you pay for it and permeable versus non, all the other. Because you've got, in a small area, you're going to have a lot of runoff, et cetera, which may have some effect because it goes down and everything else. For me, looking at it and knowing the area very well, because I go drive by it every day, and considering the condition of a lot of the stuff on that side of the road, this is a major upgrade.
I'd just like, excuse me, I'd just like to add, in the local initiative program, as you understand, that we do have to get a lot of support from the Selectmen.
Yep.
So prior to us going through that process, we wanted to meet with you informally because you are part of the application.
Right.
And so we need that.
I'd like to see a more formal submission to us, though.
We do have to do that. There is a formal process. We have to take the Department of Housing and Community Development. And if we get the, kind of the nod tonight, we will start that process.
Selectmen Whiteside?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Anthony introduced you, but I'd like to hear from each of you and what your portion of this is. So, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, my name is Dean Harrison. I live in Attleboro, Massachusetts. I've been in affordable housing now for over 26 years. I've developed housing in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, and Florida. My day job is the Director of Real Estate Development for a nonprofit in Rhode Island called Women's Development Corporation. Before that, I was the Executive Director for the Neighborhood Corporation in Taunton, Massachusetts. I have done development in various aspects from for-profit, nonprofits, specialized housing and such. I have worked with ZBAs and been retained by Mass Housing Partnership as a consultant for ZBAs. I've been retained as expert witnesses for the Housing Appeals Committee. And my background really is with the financing and the permitting.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Bushman and I'm the property owner.
On this presentation, you are not, did you just recently buy it?
So RJWV LLC is the limited liability company that he has set up for 17 Depot and for this property. So Stephen is the manager.
You're the managing partner in that, okay.
But the lot data doesn't show that name. On this page right here, there's a different name.
Should show it as RJWV.
That's, Brian needs to correct that.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
We'll have to slap your hands again.
What?
It's okay. You're all right.
We said good catch. Sorry. Thank you. That was...
Okay. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you. So Steve, speak again because I was losing it. Please.
So what would you like to know?
You own the property.
We own the property.
And you did the 17 Depot?
We did the 17 project a few years back.
Okay.
That's going well. So this property came up for sale and we retained it. And we'd like to put another little project together and help some folks that could use a hand.
Do you live in Wareham?
We live at 19 Depot Street is our residence. This is 20, and the other parcel is 17.
Okay, thank you. Is that your job?
My job is I work for Hello Company. I'm the Service and Parts Director for 35 years.
Oh, yeah. I thought I recognized. Give me a break. Okay. And Brian?
Brian Grady with GAF Engineering. We will be responsible for the site planning, the layout, drainage, utilities.
Okay. At this point, you know, we don't have a formal submission before us. So I don't think it's appropriate to take any kind of a vote, but could we, could I just ask for some sort of a consensus about what we think of this project, so that we can inform them?
You got my, like, I can't say it more. I think it's a good idea. And if you can put the plans together, I'd be happy to go along with it.
Okay.
I like it. I like the plan. It looks good.
My vote.
I like the use of how it's going to be done. I like the use of the land. And I like how it'll improve the area. I don't see any downside to any of this.
I don't either. So I would suggest you're more than likely to get our support once you give us something we can sink our teeth into. So we look forward to getting that from you.
Tell you, you know what else I like?
You said save the trees.
You know what else I like? I like the fact that you live on the street.
No, I understand that. Yeah, I understand that. Yeah. No. But you said that.
And you're going to live right there. That's pretty good. You know, I mean, you know, he's part of the neighborhood. That's pretty neat.
It is.
It is.
He can probably get some parts of my health cap, too.
Yeah, exactly. And on that note...
Go forth and create plans.
Yes, exactly. And good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, I'm going to jump over D so we can get to E and get some people in and out of here. Discussion and vote authorized town administrative apply for CPC funding for the following projects. We'll start with the dog park. We have a couple of dog park committee members here tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Trent Blanchard, Chairman of the Dog Park Further Study Committee.
Joshua Crowe, I'm President of the nonprofit Depaw.
Okay. Derek, you want to lead with this one because this will ultimately be your application?
So we've submitted the grant to the Community Preservation. I did the heavy lifting of actually just signing and submitting it. They did all the work on it. They've really done a great job. As you know, we've been trying, we've been asking people to become more engaged to work with us on projects. And there was, there's been a few times we went and looked at, well, we looked at different sites and we tried to figure out what we thought would be best for the community. So I appreciate them working with us and being flexible on some of the ideas. So today, we'll be applying for $20,000, which is the 20% match for the Stanton Foundation. And after that, I'm going to stop because I can only butcher it from here. So gentlemen?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As Derek alluded to, this process really stemmed out of the 2016, spring 2016 town meeting, where we were kind of pushing the idea of the dog park in Minor Forest. And through several conversations, identified that that was not a sustainable site for this. So the committee was formed with an open space member, Board of Selectmen member, Dog Park or Depaw Association member, and then two citizens at large. So we've been working diligently, meeting biweekly for almost a year plus now, exploring all options, all avenues, all pathways to make this a reality. We started with 10 sites, whittled that down to about five that might work, explored those, found two that were really, really great sites. Unfortunately, one of them has rights by the YMCA, which wasn't going to work. And the other site that was identified was Hathaway, which has now been slated for a nice upgrade to their playground and facility over there. And then Derek kind of came through in the clutch with this site over off Maple Springs Road, which actually turned out to be the best site that we could choose. So we went through the whole process. Our committee was challenged with liability, funding, and location. We had some pretty heavy and extensive conversations around the liability aspect and how that would implicate the town. We were fortunate enough to work through those and come to a common ground where the town will own the land. It'll be covered under general law. And then the Depaw organization, as a good faith, will take out an additional insurance policy that will cover the board and list the town as an additional approver on that as well. And that'll be paid through fundraising. We are not asking for municipal maintenance help. We are going to take care of that ourselves through fundraising, local business support, and volunteers. And we have partnered with the Department of Natural Resources and Gary Buckminster, who has stepped up. Part of the application for the Stanton Foundation, which is where we are submitting our grant request for, to build, to get the money to build the dog park, they require some insurances that if hypothetically, we all vanished and was nobody left to oversee and manage that, Gary's department has offered to step up and continue that until we can establish some entity to make that work. So I'll open it up for you guys for questions. Hi Judy?
Selectmen Whiteside?
I toured that property with, I think Mr. Leggett, I'm not really sure. Was it? Yeah. Because we were looking, I was looking to see what it looked like. It's really a very nice piece of property with a bunch of junk on it. I mean, beyond disgusting. I don't need to see it again. It was so bad. It's a really pretty piece of land and it has wetlands in it. And it has a hill in it. It has a fabulous view over the Cranberry Box. I mean, you know, it's a really pretty piece of property. Can you help me out in understanding how you're going to be controlling what we would call maybe non-attractive breeds of dogs who may have bad reputations, unearned or earned? And how are you going to protect, you know, is there going to be a water source there? Can you?
Yep, so those are great questions. So as part of the Stanton Foundation, they are a review foundation that builds dog parks all over the state of Massachusetts. They've built several in the area. They're working on a couple of projects right now in Plymouth and Medford, as well as, I think, a few additional sites.
Bourne is a contender as well.
Yep. So they have a set of requirements that the town or organization must meet. Water is one of those. So Josh is a civil engineer. He did some site surveying, found that there is a water source available from the street. We've budgeted for that as part of our design and build. So it's something we would need to work out with the town as to how we would meter water or something along those lines.
It's not, it's water, it's potable water. It's not water for sewer hookup.
Correct. As far as restriction of dog breeds, the Stanton Foundation does not allow restricting dog breeds. So German Shepherds, pit bulls, Dobermans, some of the other dogs that have a bad rep for various reasons, cannot be restricted. So that would be a self-policing by the community and the volunteers that will oversee that, much like anything else is. If you have a bully at the playground, it's kind of rely on the parents. We would rely on the dog owners to do that. Usually, these dog parks have good numbers of people that come out and that type of behavior is not allowed. We also have the support of the Department of Natural Resources and the dog, the animal control officer as well in an emergency situation.
The other, just one other point to the breed issue. The most recent amendments to the Massachusetts dog law state that municipalities can't do anything to restrict breeds. So we wouldn't be able to restrict breeds from...
Problem, you can restrict him.
Right, you can restrict the dog.
If it's a problematic dog, then yeah, that would be addressed at that point.
So individually, he can be restricted?
Yeah.
Right, but you can't say no pit bulls. You can't say no German Shepherd, especially on public property. You cannot do that.
If Johnny's dog bites you, he's gone.
Right, you can't exclude the breed, but the individual can be excluded.
I have some more questions. What do you do with all the poop?
That's going to be up to the dog, responsible dog owners, you know, carry in, carry out. We'll have a couple of trash receptacles. These things do police themselves. If you go to other dog parks and communities, Falmouth, Mashpee, Province Town, anywhere, these things really do police themselves well. We provide doggy trash bags so you can pick up. We will provide a couple of trash receptacles, at least that is budgeted right now.
Who's going to pick them up?
That is part of our nonprofit volunteer basis. We'll have a schedule that we'll coordinate with the town, so you guys know. But just like a responsible dog owner, your dog poops, then you've got to pick it up and take it out. And that's, you know, another thing that we'll have to police ourselves.
So you pick up a bucket of poop every once in a while, huh?
I mean, that's really not a problem everywhere, I hear. If you talk to all the dog parks, that's the least of their concerns. These things, they want them to look nice.
So you have potable water for the dogs at a dog level? Do you have potable water for people in a...
That's a detail we haven't figured out yet. The biggest obstacle is just getting the water from the street onto the site. Once we have the splice from the main line, we can do whatever we want.
Terminal connection.
We can, we can put it down low. We can do up top. I mean, really, whatever is going to get the most support and usage, we don't want negligence. So we'll have to look at that further once we get there.
The dogs... My personal opinion is I prefer to leave it as a dog-only. We can just, we can exploit it.
The dog's doing most of the work in the dog park, not the person.
Well, it speaks to the issue of the trash in, trash out. I mean, you know, if you're not providing fountain water, I'm going to bring one of these.
Right.
And if you don't have a trash barrel, I'm not throwing this on the ground, but I can name 20,000 people who will. You know?
And in a point to that, I mean, just to echo it again, all these other parks in these communities, these dog owners, we all take pride in what space we have. Because as you know, in this town, there is no public space that we can have off-leash for our animals. So I would anticipate a lot of, you know, self-policing and...
So it's totally fenced?
Yes.
Is it locked at night?
No, it would be open dusk till dawn, dawn to dusk, I'm sorry.
Proper signage, just like we have at the beaches, parking lots, everywhere else. It would mimic those. And there is placard signs that we would include. We have language, both from the Stanton Foundation as well as the town insurer on proper dog park signage.
Okay, so, and so you can't lock it or you won't be locking it?
We could, but then we'd have to ensure that it gets opened in a timely fashion and closed in a timely fashion, which could be problematic.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Do you have lighting there?
Not at this time.
Do you intend to have lighting?
Maybe down the road as a secondary phase, we could add that. But right now, no.
Yeah, I mean, it gets into a tricky situation where our signs say dusk to dawn, but then you're lighting a park so you're enticing people to come afterwards. We have looked at there are some battery-operated Wi-Fi cameras that we might be able to budget for and place them around the property to our theft or issues or, you know, unsolicited conduct in there. So those are things that we are exploring, but we don't have all those answers just yet.
Thanks.
I just want to say, guys, you had an uphill battle.
A little bit.
And you've done an enormous amount of work. And you have put together, it sounds to me like, a pretty good plan. And that is what we were talking about earlier, people who step up to the plate. They believe in something and then they, you know, take ownership of it and create a vehicle to get it done. And congratulations.
Yeah, I think I would add to that. I'm sorry to interrupt. And also, I appreciate the willingness to work with the town. And it wasn't do it our way or, you know, or we'll stamp our feet. It was really like we see in some other situations. So thanks again for doing it right.
Just one little clarity. I know, Derek, you said earlier that the CPC would be 20% match. It's a 10% match.
Thank you.
So you're clear.
I thought we could split the other, but that's okay.
Whatever you want.
Okay, anything else?
The project has really been permeating along for quite a while. It's nice to see people persistent and keep after it. For a while, it was like it wasn't going to happen because there were some really serious roadblocks. And we've done a really good job looking at all the variables where people could say no. It's nice to have something come forward. We can say yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, can we have a motion, please? Do you have one more thing or what?
Yeah. I, you know, I want you to know that, you know, as selectmen, our job is to do the best for the town, okay? And when we sort of send you back to the drawing board and these things, we don't do it with malice or any decision process or anything like that. We, we just have to know that the town's protected, that everything's covered, that all these kinds of things take place, because that's the oath that we have, you know? We put our hand up and we say that's what we'll do. And that's what we have to do and that's what we're going to do. And we appreciate it when you fill all the voids and get things done. We, we appreciate it greatly, in fact.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and recommend this to go forward to the CPC.
The application from the town administrator, yes.
Okay, motion by Clerk Slavin, second by Slickman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
You guys appreciate it.
Good job.
And just for the record, the finance committee did support this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Conditional approval from the guest.
So we're completing the circle.
Thank you again.
Next up, the Town Hall Auditorium roof. I guess that one is your baby alone.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, if you remember, we recently redid the slate roof. That, there was several articles that were put together and talking about redoing the slate roof and that ends a big, long saga of, I mean, we can stop there, but the...
Here's another word with S, I would have said, but that's okay.
I really want to thank Mr. Menard for, for tackling that. One of the best things we did was use a clerk of the works on it, having somebody over it. We know the times of thinking that municipal maintenance employees go stand over a work site all day long is, is not, is, well, gone. The, Mr. Menard will be presenting the, the final rundown on the numbers of the actual costs of that. All told, they will be returning afterwards, I think close to $125,000. Now here's the interesting thing. We will be requesting $120,000 for the rubber roof. We could not use the excess $125,000 because it was specifically for the slate roof. So when you think sometimes we, we like to just grab money and then spend it, we legally can't. That's exactly what the Warren article said. So we're now coming forward for the portion of the rubber roof as the slate is no longer sliding off the roof and cutting into the rubber roof from the other portion. We had one, one quote we'd gone out for of $103,000. We estimate a clerk of the works on the high end of about $5,000. And then 10%, contingency, so that came out to just under $119,000. But altogether, we're requesting $120,000 and that would be to replace the rubber roof.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and put this again forth to, you want to do it to CPC?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I said so will you.
Motion's fine. Second.
May I suggest that you up it by $10,000 just because we always have cost overruns and, and, and I'd hate to have you have to come back just because something went wrong. I know you hate spending money.
That's what the contingency's for.
Yeah, I've got 10% contingency.
You have 10%.
Yeah. It's built in.
It may or may not be enough depending what kind of damage.
If you run over on a 10% contingency, somebody better talk to you.
It's the concealed...
There better be a good reason.
Somebody better have some conversation.
But it's all that water that's been soaking into everything.
There's a lot of water damage there.
It could be rotten deck.
Yeah.
You got to pull the 10%.
And then at that point, you're, you're speaking about far more than a contingency.
Yeah, in which case then you cover it back up and then you have to come for new plans and everything else.
Come for a whole new structure, structural aspect and everything else, so...
Also, we put enough money in the job to cover a deck.
No, at that point, we'd say two.
Roof in Berkeley College.
Okay.
As long as we're not doing the interior.
Yeah, I mean, it just...
Okay, we have a motion from Slickman Toriano and a second by Clerk Slavin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And that's that. Any other town business not anticipated? What?
The resellers by law.
Oh, that's right, I skipped over that.
We don't have any documentation here, but we were going to discuss it.
Yeah. Essentially, you know, where we don't have a code enforcement person as of yet, even though there's been some diligent efforts to try to hire one. I spoke with the town administrator and suggested that perhaps the enforcement of those who have not applied and those who have applied and been denied needs to be divvied up. We have several agencies that can enforce this. We have police, we have inspectional services, and we also have the Board of Health that are all authorized under the secondhand reseller by law to enforce it. And what I suggested to the town administrator was that he try to contact those department heads and see if they'd be willing. So I'll turn it over to him to see what he got for a response.
Well, what's taking so long to get a code enforcement officer?
The applications we got, they were, they were basically no good. We put them into, Raquina put it into whatever the local, you know, that, I can't think of the name. You guys must have like a magazine or something that goes around. So we put it into there as well. So we're not getting much bites on it, so...
Well, you know, I, I think we talked, I think I talked to you about this, I think. You, you probably won't get a local inspector who wants, who has a local inspector to ticket already to want to take that job. It's, it's, he doesn't, he wants less enforcement and more whatever. I mean, that's just how they are. But you would probably get somebody who wants to become an enforcement officer, right? Who has the ticket, meaning you got to have a construction supervisor's license and enough experience to be able to sit for the test, who will want the experience so that they can sit for the test. And that's the kind of person they think you need to get for that. And, you know, he's not going to be here forever, but he is going to be here enough to get your, your show on the road. He's going to cost you a hell of a lot less and, you know, you'll be able to get things underway. And then down the road, he'll, he'll, you know, he'll take his test and eventually move on. Or maybe you'll have a space for him as a local inspector.
Yeah, because the only thing he can do until he gets his local is just our town bylaws, right?
That's right. Well, no, because he can just do it through Raquina. In other words, he'd have to do all the signings, but that doesn't mean that he can't view it. He can't say, well, I saw this and this, whatever. I mean, you had a, you had an inspector here once upon a time who had no ticket, who was acting as your, your commissioner of buildings. I mean, there's, there's nothing wrong with that, as long as there's someone with a ticket that's standing up behind him, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, I didn't have him here.
Huh?
I didn't have him.
I know you didn't. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put that on you.
In fact, he had him out of here, but...
And so, you know, you know what I'm saying? Is that, and somebody will want to come and get that experience and, and be able to take that exam and be able to move, you know what I mean? And move on at some point. And it'll cost you way less money in order for it to happen.
Okay.
Well, that, that's probably good advice, but for the meantime, I just wanted to get it out there that, you know, we are, we had something like 20 people reapply and paid their money and did what they were supposed to do. And they're all properly licensed and we have about that many more anyway that are still out there that were certainly informed about this by law. Were told by our ambassador who went around to all these places, you got to apply. It's been over a year. So I did speak with Mr. Sullivan about getting some enforcement done now, even as we wait for the code person to come in.
Yeah, so we've got the three, three departments that we're going to split it through.
I get that. The problem that we have is what are we going to do about enforcement of the fines?
Well, it gets to the court level.
Yeah, we're going to have to do something. We got to, Rich, we got to give Rich some instructions or something and set him loose on coming up with some solution for that. We can't, we can't be putting effort in to try to enforce these things and have them being double-crossed like that. We can't.
Yeah, I mean, there's not much we can do to control the court. I mean, I don't know if we want to at some point designate somebody, probably the code enforcement person, to go be the, the special prosecutor for, for civil infractions in town and maybe handle it that way, other than police matters, traffic matters, things like that. Maybe that's what you do. And then you've got that one, that one person going in and dealing with the clerk magistrate and they develop a relationship with him. And it tends to work out a little better if you can do it that way. I know that's how cities tend to handle those sorts of things.
I think, I think that's right, because I think, doesn't Bobby do his own stuff?
Athier, he goes, yeah, he goes...
Pretty good at getting his fines too, isn't he?
He gets, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
He does a great job. So I think that's, you know, I think his, his batting percentage is pretty darn good.
I think, I think you're right, though. I think the way to do this is to have a department set up like for parking and, you know, these kinds of fines where, you know, you are the, you're the hearing officer.
Yeah, because technically I'm the hearing officer for the parking fines right now. That's, the lieutenants take over on that, so...
You're lucky.
You're the official.
Yeah.
Okay, Slickman Whiteside?
Or you're designated.
They're operating without a license. What other recourse do we have?
Well, that's just it. You have to go out there. I mean, my suggestion would be that whoever the enforcement person is from whatever agency goes out and says, look, let me see your license. Oh, you don't have one? You need to get one. Here's where you get the application. It's followed up with a letter from this board saying, we understand on such and such a date you were visited, you were told, you know, send that out a couple of weeks afterwards if you still don't see your application. And then wait another week or two and then just send them out with a ticket book.
Okay.
I think that's ultimately what, what has to happen here.
I'd say go for it, dude.
Yeah.
Can I just make one comment on the collection bins, which were sort of an extension?
Okay.
Can you say no?
Yeah.
Have any left?
She's getting to that.
There's one that has been properly licensed and the rest of them have been taken away.
Yes.
Yep.
I didn't know you were delivering good news. Thank you.
Sorry.
Well, that was dry. Okay, now, does anybody have any 48-hour business? Slickman Toriano, Slickman Scasiati, Slickman Whiteside, Clerk Slavin. I don't have anything. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did just discover that we have a COD enforcement officer as well, so...
We do?
Yes.
That's nice.
COD.
Is that part of the Shellfish Wardens duties as well?
I think so.
Cash on delivery.
Judy didn't see that spelling.
No.
So just an additional update, a few, a couple of town meetings ago, an article was brought forward to purchase electric vehicles for the town. We've actually gone forward and we're purchasing three Chevy Bolts already with the incentives. It's a pretty darn good deal. The, the new incentives to the state have not, we don't know if they're going to come through or what's going on with the budget. However, we've submitted those so that we'll be first in round, around to get those incentives. Those could be $2,500 per vehicle. This isn't a capital lease, it's a true 36-month lease. We've also, we'll be installing, we're going between, we've located two spots that where we'd put a charging station. We were looking at the Quadzilla, but I know Zilla doesn't make people happy nowadays, which was a four-head unit. But I think we'll do the, the two dual head and move forward with that. So that's something that's really exciting. That's between the incentives, the money set aside, this isn't going through the operating budget outside of the charging, so I, I'm excited about that.
You should be right at home, like in the Prius.
Yeah. I already have a Prius, that's my own vehicle, so don't, I'm not taking this, this is, or as one person told me once, so don't take the town's limo. We have Chevy Bolts, not limos. So we're looking, within the next three, three weeks, we should have those all up and running. And then Slickman Slavin will stop hounding me for certain things.
You owe me mine.
No, we won't.
Oh, no we won't.
No, we won't.
Fuck with that.
We've also, the, the dreary weather has had a slight impact on the, the parking kiosks. May last year versus this year, last year we brought in a little over $8,700. We're almost at 41, we were almost at 4,100. And then June so far year-to-date, there's a $520. We're a little less this year. So all told, we're about $5,100 less than the previous year, but considering the weather, I'm glad that we've even come up to the almost $18,000. So end of June, July, August, September's traditionally been a pretty, pretty good month for us on the weekends as well. So that's the update.
Did you have more on the receptacles?
The, so we did speak about the, the Big Belly Solar Trash Compactors. We have, we have ordered four for onset. Somebody had spoken to me, they wanted them on the South Boulevard and they said, well, that's where the worst trash is, which is one of the most unbelievable things, because with the parking, so you have two things, you have the kiosks and then you have the separate resident parking program. People sometimes like to mesh them, they're two completely different things. That section is controlled by the resident parking. So only people of onset village are parking there or the renters. So if that's where the worst trash is, that means that either the renters or the residents are the ones dropping the trash in that area. So that, that's a little disconcerting.
Probably we should be with the Board of Health checking to see where the renters are, if the prop winds are providing proper trash receptacles.
And they're supposed to.
Then they're supposed to. That's a requirement for the renters, you know, for the rental properties.
May I make a suggestion on that?
I know that that program has been a beneficial one to the town. Maybe Mr. Athier could remind the realtors in the area who rent these places, but you can also do it on Air and...
B and B.
AirBib and...
B and B.
Whatever those things are. And, and...
My face.
I don't know what they're called. I don't know what they're called. All I know is that there are many ways of renting and that you may not know what the rules are and that, knowledge is power.
Well, you know, the Board of Health inspects all the rentals.
Yeah, the people who admit to rentals.
Well, actually, I think they've pretty much got them all now. They've done a pretty damn good job with this program. And I think they check for trash receptacles and all that stuff. I think it's all included in the inspection.
I don't think they have them all.
So I don't think we're giving away any state secret that if you're on VRBO, we need a vacation, Airbnb, we're fairly sophisticated, where we can pull up the info and we do for, for rentals. And some people said, I'm not renting. And we said, hey, see these blocked off dates and...
Exactly. Okay, so you are a follower.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah. They're digging pretty deep.
In fact.
They are.
And, and you know, it's just part of it, it's not, it's really not gotcha stuff. It's about bringing everybody in line, trying to make sure, I mean, you, we hear some of the horror stories of rentals. Turned out the, the shower was a hose that was nailed to a tree in the back backyard. That was the visual, that was, the shower was an outdoor shower, so, you know, and some of these people are, yeah, they got clean, I guess. Some of these people in today, with today's technology, you're renting them sight unseen. And we know that there's also a lot of scams through Craigslist and such, so...
Especially Craigslist.
It's, and in a way, this protects everyone, the, the owner of the property and the renters as well, so...
The state is actually doing the, with the hotel and motel taxes stuff, is going after those programs, now they're actually going to pass a law, so they now fall under the same thing as the hotel and motels, so we'll be, we'll have another piece to be able to control it.
Yeah, I would think one of the best ways they could do that, actually, is through the, through the websites themselves.
That's what they're going to do, because the Cape in particular has really been screaming about a lot of individuals, you know, running through that system and being, you know, not being controlled at all, they're losing a lot of money on the Cape.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a tough one, some of the reasons that people can even afford these homes is that they rent them out until either they're going to retire or such, yeah, we have some of the apps in this town especially, we have some absentee landlords that have picked up their houses through foreclosure, don't put a dime into them, just put people into a tough situation, but there's many people where, you know, that's their second home, and to make ends meet, that's what they're doing, so it is tough, I understand that. As much as I love revenue, it's, you know, two sides of the coin.
I just have a question, are you done with your report? That wasn't my question.
What am I supposed to say? Is that not there?
No, do you have something to add to your report?
No.
You're all set, all right.
I do have a question. I was, I don't know what day it was, and I was leaving Town Hall at 2:00, I think it was a Thursday, and there must have been 400 vehicles driving through not only Viking Drive, but I'll call it the slots between the school and the main, you know, Town Hall.
Middle school and the Town Hall.
Yeah, middle school and the Town Hall. People backed into the road on the, in ingress, entrance to Town Hall.
Egress.
They're all picking up kids at school. Now, I'm going to say something that'll get me yelled at a lot, I don't know why we're providing bus service when you have 400 cars coming and picking up kids. Now that I'm being funny about it, it's inappropriate to have the Town Hall parking lot totally taken up by school traffic.
I actually, I actually had a nutty in the superintendent's office about a month ago, he's laughing because he knows about it, I tried to pull, pull into the parking lot here, I was close to the curb of the Town Hall, not where the, where the green is out in front, and somebody had just pulled up and stopped there, they were obviously waiting for a kid, they were blocking the, you know, if anybody had come along in a wheelchair or whatever, they wouldn't have been able to wheel into Town Hall, they just stopped there. You know, in the meantime, I looked down, you know, 50 feet, and we've got our nice red sign, you know, no parking here, per order, Board of Selectmen, I'm thinking, well, that's gone by the wayside. I tried to pull around this person, and two more people come bombing by me, doing about 35, and just about take my nose off, and that was the point where I just kind of lost it, and went up, and I said, look, they're supposed to be using Viking Drive, they're not supposed to be using our parking lot, you've got to get the message out to these people, and, you know, I think it's going to take actually putting officers down there with ticket books to stop it, because it's just become so endemic, you know, school's over, what, tomorrow or something?
It's done.
Just done now, it's, so, but for the fall, you know, perhaps the chief and Mr. Sullivan could work with the superintendent, so he can just get the word out and say, kids over there, town business here, we can't have, you know, the two mixed, because we're going to get, we've got kids cutting through the parking lot, going walking between cars, and somebody's going to get splattered.
That's the scariest thing, because being in there all the time, when you look, the kids are weaving in between the cars, looking for their, for their parents' car, and it's, that is scary, you know, because some of them, they're a little shorter, you won't see them over the tall SUVs, they're popping out, and that's, it's pretty scary, so...
One of the things that I thought of, they do this in some schools that I know, that a school employee has to open the door to put the child in.
Yeah, no, okay.
No, we'd be out there for four years, and it would cure it.
The, the one thing that we might hear in response is that this is what happens when you're cutting down on, you know, some of the busing to certain areas, so it would just be, so...
Carpool.
Well, I mean, there's plenty of room, I look over at their, the middle school parking lot, and there's plenty of unused space over there, people just don't want to drive into the parking lot, and then come out, wait for the bus line, it's more convenient for the parent to just, you know, biff in here and zip out again, so it's a matter of convenience, not room, so I really think we need to, you know, work on that and get it straightened out for the fall, because if it's not one of us running a kid over, it's going to be somebody else.
Right, I agree with you, thank you, Peter.
Okay, liaison initiative reports, anything, 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 Sleckman White side?
No, thank you.
Sleckman Slavin.
Plymouth County Advisory Board meeting was, annual budget meeting was this past Thursday. We had one issue in particular on the budget, which was raising the commissioners' salaries back to the level they were in 2009. In 2009, the members of the board had cut the salaries, actually tried to cut the salaries of the commissioners to zero, which the state laws would not allow, but they brought them to the absolute minimum, because at that time, the county was close to bankruptcy, the commissioners couldn't even talk to each other, the whole thing was a mess. They made an agreement with the commissioners that if and when the county basically straightened out and started to be profitable, and all the issues were resolved, that they would raise their salary back. At this particular meeting, the county has a $700,000 surplus at the end of the fiscal year, the issues that have been going on over the last four years have all been resolved, and in the budget, the salaries were brought back up to the original of 2009 of $28,000. In particular, Plymouth let it charge not to have any salary increase at all, I'm not going to go into the reasons why, I don't think it's appropriate, but the bottom line is that the first vote for no increase at all was defeated, the next one was at $20,000 a year to go up to, and that did get passed, and I would expect probably a year from now they'll go back, and if things move along the way, it looks like financially that they'll bring them back to where they were. I was very disappointed, because this was an actual agreement through the county that they would do this, if A and B happened, then C would happen, and it didn't happen, and I think it was ethically wrong, but we represented, you know, very well on this, and that's really all I have for today.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we don't have any bills or documents, so that brings us to...
I'm moved to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Sleckman White side, seconded by Sleckman Scaziotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you and good night.